The hour of 7:30 has arrived, and so I'd like to call to order this study session of District 116 for November 7th, 2017. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Here.
I know your name. It's hard to call you Brenda, but that's okay. Sorry, she's still member Brenda. And Member Hall.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Pulaski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Vice President Rollins Gay and President Danant.
Here.
Quorum is present. Any additions, corrections, modifications to this evening's agenda? Probably none from the administration?
Nope.
All right. Don, our superintendent is home ill.
For John.
And unable to be here tonight, so our associate assistant superintendent is sitting in. Any citizen statements this evening? Any citizen that wishes to address the board, please come forward and fill out a golden rod sheet. And while we're waiting to see if that will happen, I'd like to thank Stephen Thompson for running the cameras for us tonight, so the folks can watch at home. Seeing no one stepping forward, we'll move on. We have no call for executive, for an executive meeting or session after this evening's meeting. We do need a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion is carried. We have no commendations or recognitions tonight, but we do have an administrative briefing and report from our high school administration who wishes to make a change to the calendar for next year.
Good evening. So next year's calendar has a professional development half day scheduled for September 21st, 2018. What's that?
28th, isn't it? Oh, I'm looking at a different one then.
Yeah, sorry. The current schedule reads that it's on September 21st, you're right. Sorry, I'm confusing the dates.
I'm sorry.
The, it is, no, it's on the 28th. The current schedule for next year is September 28th for the half day. Our proposal is that we bump the half day professional development back one week to the 21st. And the reason for us is we have our, in scheduling our homecoming for, not only for our football game, but just our homecoming festivities, we currently have our homecoming scheduled on the 21st of next year. However, University of Illinois' football schedule came out about four weeks ago, and their only Friday night game that they're playing next year is on the 21st. Which would coincide, as it did this year, it would coincide with our homecoming again next year. So it obviously impacts not only the half day, but, you know, obviously, we don't, we don't want to move. But with that said, the University of Illinois has offered for local schools that this impacts, for us to play our game the following day on September 22nd at Memorial Stadium. So that would be an option for us. However, we wouldn't want to play our homecoming game on the Saturday at Memorial Stadium. Obviously, we'd want to play it at home. So our suggestion is to bump the, the, that half day up to the 21st and move our homecoming week back one week. It still falls in our schedule where the following week on the 28th, we do have a home game. And so it would fit into our schedule where we could do our traditional homecoming game and festivities, traditionally Friday night football game, Saturday night dance, and so forth.
So you'll be playing a game on the 22nd at the stadium? It just won't be the homecoming game?
Correct.
Is that the idea?
Yeah.
Board member questions?
The only question I have is, would this impact our ability to bring in the external source, resources for staff development? Is there something already been scheduled for the prior date or not?
Currently, it's my understanding is there's nothing been scheduled that, because it's far enough out that we should be, we should be in good shape to be able to do that. But I would look at Kathy Barbero's kind of that to say that I think that's a good point.
Natalie Brett's the director of professional development, and I've looked at it, no problem at all.
What about class reunions? Because I know oftentimes, there's a lot of class reunions around the homecoming time, and they always look forward to coming back. You know, is there anything lined up as far as a class reunion?
Okay, so great, another really good question is, by bumping it now, we can let all the class reunions know when the homecoming game is. And the other part about the homecoming game, by bumping the professional development day to 21st, making homecoming, then we're at our stadium and everything else, which is where people want, they want to do the tour in the, you know, in the more, or in the, on Saturday morning and stuff like that. They've seen the game Friday night, those kind of things. They like it to be at the school. If we were at Memorial Stadium and stuff, it'd kind of take away from the specialists of homecoming.
Ah, okay. The other thing I was just thinking is, that's the Friday before Labor Day, correct? Or am I wrong thinking that?
No, that's the beginning. Yeah.
No, this is the end.
Ah, okay. Ding dong. Sorry, I'm spacing.
Okay.
Okay, other.
So on this that we got, that has the highlighted thing, this is what your proposal is.
No, the 28th is where it is currently.
This is where it is currently, what's highlighted.
Yes, yes. So bumping it a week earlier would be the 21st, the half day. Homecoming would then go to the 28th.
Okay. Staff development day activities, no school for elementary students.
Would be on the 21st, not the 28th.
Be on the 21st, right. And early dismissal for UMS and the Times and UHS. Goes back to.
The 21st.
The 21st.
And then 28th would be a normal, just regular school day.
That's just.
But we would have homecoming festivities and pep assemblies and all that.
Which we would be able to hold the parade at the traditional three o'clock, which we always have, except for this year. We'd be able to do the tailgate afterwards, which, those things we weren't able to do this year, because this year's homecoming fell on a half day. So we had to do our parade at 12:30 this year, which made it difficult for people that were responsible for things in the parade to get back for the professional development as well. And then we, and then with that said, we had to cancel our tiger tailgate as well, because obviously, staff members were in the PD.
All right. Any further questions?
Well, I just, the comment too is that we need to hear from our elementary schools, because they're on this calendar. It's not just high school driven. So if there's anything that's already been planned out, possibly, I'm just thinking out loud, because it impacts everybody, not just the high school.
And at the administrative team level, we couldn't find anything that would be affected. You know, part of the concern was professional development, which is the issue for the elementary schools. But the morning professional development on those days is directed at the district level, and afternoon by principals. We had, we had nothing that we could think of that had already been booked, or that would be screwed up in any way.
Okay, does this end up changing what team we're playing?
It does.
Well, I know we tend to like to want to have a certain team that we're playing against on our homecoming, so.
Who, who would you like to see us?
Somebody we can win it. I'm not going there. I mean, I would go to the ballgame, but I'm not going there.
So on, if we kept it the same on the 20th, the week of the 21st, we would play Bloomington High School. And the reason why we chose that, obviously, you, when you look at your homecoming dates, you can only choose the home games. And so that, you can't pick something at the beginning, you don't want to pick something at the very end, so you look at the middle dates. The middle dates for us next year are the 21st and the 28th. The 21st, we selected initially because we have two road games prior to that week. So the tradition of homecoming being away for football and then coming back was the logical choice. By shifting it back a week to the 28th, we would then pick up, we would then play Centennial as our homecoming game. So makes it a little added flavor with the cross town rivals as well.
Okay. I just wanted it out there, and you've done a very excellent job of having all the bits and pieces, so everybody listening understands as well. So I appreciate it greatly.
When would this come up for a vote, then?
I would assume at the next meeting. While we're talking about calendar, I would just like the administration not, I don't want to discuss it tonight, but it seems rather illogical to be gone for three days over Martin Luther King Monday, and then come back to school for a half a day, rather than having that half a day on Friday the week before, so that the time, I mean, it seems kind of strange to have a three day weekend followed up by a half day school. And so I would hope that at some point in time, the calendar committee would take a look at that, and give me a reason exactly why that is so, it just seems illogical to have a three and a half day week, especially when you have a day off, a half day in the morning, an afternoon off, early dismissal on Wednesday, and then Thursday and Friday. It, it, it doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I'm sorry.
So that's, and I'll let that, we don't need to discuss that tonight, because it cannot be brought before us next week. It's just something that I would ask that the administration will look at in the future. So, all right. Any other questions about the proposal that is on the, the reason I'm bringing it up is because we can't vote on anything that isn't on the agenda earlier tonight. So I'm not trying to make that change to the calendar.
We have calendar thirty minutes that need to be pulled. So if, because I can't remember back from that.
I think it probably has something to do with the fact that the university is not in session on Friday. But it seems to me that it's a terrible inconvenience to our students to come back for a half a day Tuesday morning, and then be off Tuesday afternoon.
Students, what about parents, you know? Yeah. I just want to say.
And more importantly, the instructional day, the interruption, you've already been interrupted for a three day weekend, and then you're a half day, and then you're a shortened day, and then a full day Thursday and Friday at the secondary.
If I remember correctly, when we talked about this, when this proposal originally came before us, it was, yes, it was a fact that the university, and trying to schedule resource speakers for that, for that Friday was, was almost impossible, so they wanted to move it to the Monday.
Yeah. I would think it would be equally difficult to schedule it for Tuesday after a three day weekend, when classes are in session at the university. Classes are in session Tuesday morning, they're not in session on Friday, so most of your speakers should be teaching at the university, I would assume. But I'm not an academic. Any other questions?
No, I just want to say thank you, because I would like to see homecoming get back to having games Friday nights, and being able to have the tailgate, because that's when a lot of people, or you know what I mean, that's when a lot of clubs can make a lot of money and stuff. So I am very glad, it seems like you guys really researched this a lot, so thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Thanks.
Anything else? Thanks. This will be on our agenda for action then in two weeks. I guess that gives enough time for the elementary schools to voice any objections that they may have to the change. Next on our agenda is our action item for.
Sorry, there's no policy review?
No.
Was it the very?
Yeah, no, no policy reviews tonight. We do have a single action item tonight, which is an administrative personnel item, which is a hiring of a assistant principal to be split between Lille and Yankee Ridge Schools. Any discussion?
I'm going to have to ask this, because I've gotten feedback from parents who are upset that there's, there's big classrooms in, at Yankee Ridge, and they want to know why we're spending money on an administrator, when they feel that there should be another teacher in the building. I have to, I.
Yeah, that's a valid question.
Go ahead. The motion for the hiring, that one?
That's the motion we would be leading towards, if you want to put a motion on the floor before we discuss, but there's going to be discussion. Any, anyone wish to put this motion on the floor, so we can discuss it?
Sure, I move acceptance of the hiring of the assistant principal for, to be split between Lille and Yankee Ridge.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Now we can discuss, and the question is on the floor, is to, Paul posed a question.
All right, well, thank you for your question. One of the things, then, looking at Yankee Ridge's numbers over the years, we try and, or we've tried, the administrative team has tried to really be mindful of how it is that we can adjust in a way that's going to be best for student needs. Now, understanding that we honestly don't really have a good idea until the third week of school, we've explored a variety of different options in terms of how it is that we can adjust the class size, but also provide additional support. And that may be in regards to additional TAs or instructional coaches that we have placed at Yankee Ridge as well. And also thinking about, I know the idea of just adding another teacher seems like the ideal solution, but even adding another teacher within the space confines due to the construction, isn't something that would be feasible at this time. And so when we think about the administrative addition to providing many of those teachers with support, and particularly this candidate, who is both bilingual and special education certified, and has a variety of credentials, we saw this as an opportunity because of the quality of the candidate that we have, and looking at the trajectory and future of Yankee Ridge, and also Lille, a candidate that would be a strong asset to the district.
I just wanted to say, I've heard some positives about this from some families in my sub-district. They're very excited to be able to have an assistant principal who will be bilingual, because some families, there's a huge barrier still with communication. And so the family that reached out to me, they were very happy about this, because they felt like, it's like one less hoop they don't have to go through. They'll be able to talk to this person, and be able to understand and get their point across, without having to go through another interpreter or something, so.
Peggy?
Mine's more of a general question, since the assistant principal idea is still relatively new to our district. I mean, to my knowledge, the first time we hired one was for Dr. Williams School, you know, for, because of the huge numbers of students that had that title, I mean, at the elementary level.
The elementary level, that's, that's the first one.
When my kids were there, when Ms. Jeffries was there.
She had an assistant principal then?
She did.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
That's when enrollment was near 500.
Okay. So yes, but only when enrollment has, you know, approached 500, as it recently did again at Dr. Williams. And, and I understand Lille, which is kind of, I guess, my question is, what is our policy about hiring assistant principals at the elementary school? Because it is a whole new frontier, and is this a direction that we see ourselves going after, you know, and is it, is there a level at which, over which the student growth approaches that we decide we need an assistant principal, or has it more to do with the nature of the student body at a particular school? Like I said, Dr. Williams, at least in the last 10 years, was the first time we had an assistant principal, and so now we're looking at adding one to two other schools. Is this, can you say if this is a direction we're moving in for all our elementaries?
What I would say is, I think it's a combination of those things, looking at both student demographics and needs, but then also looking at, at trends that we see within our school, within our, within our school, and what support teachers are going to need as well. And so we want to be as much proactive as we can, in terms of, I would say, in this particular regard, looking at a candidate that's of high quality, and brings a lot of assets to the district that we don't necessarily have. And really thinking about, in the future, what are some of the needs that our buildings may have in terms of needing assistant principals, or needing additional administrators? So I would say, in this particular case, we really wanted to bring in someone who is very unique, and brings a tremendous amount of, you know, experience, but also skill sets to areas that, that we don't necessarily have. And so that, that was the impetus for this particular decision. But as we think about what other buildings may need in the future, we just want to be, we want to have a thoughtful approach, and consider all of the different aspects that might be, whether it's school size, school demographics, the climate, or even the level of, I'd say credentialing of teachers, right? Whether we have newer veteran teachers, and determining how it is that we look at needing additional administrative support.
And I do remember at King and Dr. Williams, Dr. Henry did both schools. And as a parent of King School, it made a big difference. We had a lot of male African-American kids, and other kids of different cultures, that this man, it made the whole atmosphere change, and him working with Dr. Adcock. So this is not our first time. We need to go back, because Dr. Henry did halftime at Prairie, Dr. Williams halftime at King. So we're looking at the culture now of these two schools. I think that this is needed, and as a communication factor, but also culturally, we need this. So trends, if you look at evidence-based research, and I'm sure that was done before these decisions were made, we're talking about not us, but these kids and their parents. So I agree, I think it's time, and it would impact our students greatly.
Okay, well, that's good to have that history, but.
Has the district formally designated the roles and responsibilities for assistant principal? Are there, are there some subset of teachers going to be evaluated by the assistant principal? How's that division of labor work?
Yes, yes. I mean, we do have an active job description, and assistant principals do evaluate teachers throughout the district. With this assistant principal position starting mid-year, it's midway through the evaluation cycle, so it would be an expectation for next year, when the, when it starts. But we, we've been pleased with the duties as outlined, and have an active job description going. I think the thing to keep in mind is, this is an assistant principal and administrative position is one way to support schools, students, teachers, and we touched on some of the other ones, you know, instructional coaches, or technology support, sometimes it's TAs or other educational support professionals. There are lots of different things, mental health supports, that we look at in terms of support. So I don't think we'd ever be moving toward, okay, you hit this number of students, this is what, you know, we treat our school, we look case by case basis, on what supports to put in place for teachers, for students. Is that answer your question, Paul?
Prior to tonight, I had outlined my concerns to, I have absolutely no problem with the individual, this is, I don't know the individual, so, but I had expressed that I had, I would be much more comfortable had this been part of our annual budgeting process, as opposed to being presented with a position basically after it's been offered to somebody, with the board not being aware that the position was being created. And I could be absolutely in error on that. And Don's been ill and not been able to, so I missed a couple meetings during, during some timeframe, and perhaps this was talked about at that point in time, but just, that's my feeling on this, is that I think the questions bear out tonight, that, from other board members, that, multiple board members, that we make budgetary choices, and this is a budget choice in the end. And I'm hoping that it's been tested against the other budget options. You even mentioned the other sources of support. I hope that this has been tested against that. We have a list of proposed budget add-ons, and I don't recall seeing this on that list of budget add-ons. And so that's, that's my two cents, and what went through my head over the weekend, as we looked at this, without knowing this, it's no reflection on this individual, it's no reflection on the, it's not negating the needs, but we have a lot of needs, and I'm just hoping it's been tested against the others, so.
See, I.
And in the absence of a strategic plan update, these are the kinds of things that come up before us, and I would hope that we, and I know that that got delayed last year. So hopefully, we can get back to that, and decisions like this, where we're adding positions in, in the face of budgetary constraints, is, is considered in an overall context.
I see your point. I feel a little bit differently, because I feel like the administration has decided upon this due to the workload, the climate of each school. So I am pretty much, I mean, I know, I don't know whether we're voting or not tonight, but I'm in support of this. I understand where the need is coming from, and I think the sooner, you know, granted, not everything can be in black and white at the beginning of the year, but the need is there, it is real, and I support this 100 percent. I understand about the budget cuts and everything, but I also understand that we need to give our principals at these schools extra support. We need to give families, students, and staff extra support. And I think this position is very much needed at those two schools.
But the argument against it is that we knew how big these buildings were going to be when we did our original budgeting process. We knew how much, these needs were known months ago, so why wasn't it a part of the other regular budgeting process? Why is it, just, why did I find out about this on Friday?
Right, right. Just, this is significant hire, I mean, you know, which is to say, I share your concerns. I mean, I, I have no question that this is a highly qualified candidate, but.
And I do realize, Don was able to tell me that our peers in other districts, schools of that size do have that level of administrative support. But, and I, so I'm not arguing against the need, the recognition of the need, what I'm arguing is that ad hoc decisions like this can get us into trouble, budgetary wise, if we're not careful.
And I understand that, but also, we didn't know what we were going to have as far as children.
Oh, we knew pretty close.
Not during the budget time, we didn't know.
Yes, we did. We knew within 20 or 30 kids, of exactly how many kids we were going to have.
We knew we were moving kids from Williams to Yankee Ridge, and we knew that we're planning on expanding it to a three or four inch school for next year, so it's not a surprise.
Yeah, but some way, we didn't look at the whole picture.
That's exactly my point. We need to look at the whole picture.
Right.
That's exactly my point.
The other thing is, that I think is, the administration, the only principals, and the only principals that we really, I don't know if you want to say, are aware of or have a say in, is the middle school and the high school. Am I correct?
But we authorize the total headcount in the district every year when we do a budget.
Right.
Every year, we authorize a total headcount, and this is a change in the headcount. That's why on your regular personnel items, you see in the parentheses after this one, new position effective January 3rd. Sometimes we have replaced so-and-so.
Right.
Or grant funded, or new position, or, or whatever. It's, it's, we do have policy issues here that Peggy, I think, raised clearly, which is, if we're moving in the direction of assistant principals, then that should be a strategic decision made on behalf of the district, at the district level, before we have a person who's already been interviewed and hired. Not hired, we're doing the final hiring tonight, but I'm sure the job offer is out to this person, or we wouldn't have a name in front of us. Yeah. I know, I, you're, you're subbing for Don, and I told Don that this was most likely going to be a matter of discussion this evening.
Right, and this does not reflect the qualifications of the candidate, which I have no doubt are impeccable, and will, you know, at all.
I imagine this is before us tonight, because it was an opportunity, opportunity to hire. We came across somebody who was interested, and who was an excellent choice, and that's why it's such a quick thing for us.
And someone that's available in January, which is unusual to fill that skill set.
Right, I'm sure this is a higher of opportunity in some ways, but.
Right.
Are we finished with the discussion? Are we ready?
Oh, I'm gonna ask, would you prefer to end up tabling this? Is there anything wrong with us voting this down? I mean, we have a motion on the floor to approve a hiring.
Well, the only risk would be-
We would have to vote it down and then make another motion to make sure that we bring it back.
The risk on that is you may lose the, the candidate.
Exactly, I know where we're at with that, but we are also have just come into something that we don't know all the details about.
It's the, it's whatever the board wishes to do. I'm prepared to vote, but.
I'm prepared to vote.
Yeah, I am too. I, I mostly wanted to just voice my concern about the, the process that we're following to hire something like that. And I feel like, I agree with Paul, I think this was a, an opportunity that we couldn't pass up. And those things happen and you can't always plan for those and I acknowledge that, but I wanted to make sure at least it was out there that this is not the optimal way to go about adding to our administrative, um, you know, structure. That's not how we usually do it, but I'm prepared to vote in favor of this. So I, I, I wouldn't be in favor of tabling it, but appreciate the offer.
Well, the options there.
Right.
If anybody was uncomfortable doing this, do not.
Um, I, my only question is, and is, it probably would be for Don, if Don were here, but is this the sort of thing that we could have been warned about in advance with other hires? I mean, is this something that if, even if it is an opportunistic hire, is it something that we could have been told, hey, you know, there's this outstanding candidate that could really work in our district for X, Y, and Z and we're, we're, we're gonna have talks with this person? Is this something that we would need to be in, you know, talked about in advance just as a courtesy? Or is it something that we would have a say in? I, I did, I mean, I do share the concerns. I did see this email and thought, no, that's, you know, on the agenda, it's a little short notice, but okay, you know, but being the, like, junior-most person here, I don't know what the hiring process is for things like assistant principals or principals. And I just wanted to know if we could have been forewarned a little bit more. That's, that's my one concern. I just, I want the optics to be clear for everybody when, you know, if and when this comes to pass. And I think that it's a great opportunity. It sounds like a great position and this is killing so many birds with one person, you know, so to speak, with the special ed and the bilingual and everything else and spreading out the work. But I just, I also am concerned about the optics of it and, and kind of, for lack of a better word, feeling blindsided. That's not, that's kind of a negative word, but you know, that's, yeah.
I'll make my position clear. I'm, I'm, um, one part of me says abstain and one part of me says vote for it. Uh, and the only reason that I will vote for it is because we do have needs with classroom sizes getting large. And part of Sam's answer was that it's not feasible to add a teacher at this point because of space. If it were feasible at this point in time to add a teacher who worked directly with the kids, I would probably be voting no on this and voting that we instead look at enlarging our direct teaching staff. No matter what the qualifications and what the needs are. And I, I'm, I'm hope, Don, I'm sure is sitting at home watching this on TV saying, I really, really wish I was here. But I'm assuming that, um, if the administration isn't, wasn't clear before Friday, they're very, very clear right now that before any administrative positions are added to this district, that the board needs to be informed and it needs to be approved. And if that's not understood, it's, I think it's probably pretty well-understood at the moment. Because, um, uh, we went through this when we added and changed the administrative structure at the high school. Uh, and it was a board decision. It's not a board decision on who gets hired necessarily ahead of time. Now, don't mix that up, but it is our role, and to your question, it's very much our role to, to provide the policy framework within which administrators are hired.
When did the job posting go out for this?
I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head.
I mean, uh, in theory, we should have been told when that happened and we weren't.
And I guess, I guess, when I'm, this candidate had applied for previous positions. We had known this candidate before. So this wasn't, this wasn't a posted position for these two schools and this assistant principalship. If that makes sense. This isn't a position that was posted. This was a position, um, uh, this, this candidate was on, in, under, in our radar from, from previous positions.
You're digging the hole deeper.
Does that make sense?
You're digging the hole deeper, Catherine.
I can't vote for this.
You're, you're digging the hole deeper.
Well, because it, what it appears to, to the, the public is we wanted to hire this person no matter what. We were gonna find a place for this person. And that's, it, you know, it looks like favoritism because-
That's what I heard.
It, it looks like, uh, oh yeah, we really like you, we'll find something for you eventually, you know? And some people could interpret it that way.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, yeah, I know, I mean, you know, that probably wasn't, but that's what it looks like. And I'm just trying to be really sensitive to administrative shifts, you know? We just want to keep our track record clean from here on out and so that's, that's a difficulty.
I think of how overwhelmed these principals must be at these two schools with the size of students that they have at each school. And I think that an assistant principal would be very helpful at both of the schools to be able to help the principals because I'm sure their workload has doubled, if not tripled.
And I don't doubt that is true, but why didn't we have a discussion about the need to create that position? Post it openly, interview multiple candidates for it and hire it?
I mean, we did have that discussion when we went to that route with Dr. Williams. Remember, you know, as the numbers went up, they said, I, you know, we'll look at an assistant principal and, um, you know, because not, it's not just for our sake, it's for the public. Who knows, you know, why are we using limited dollars and shifting them into administrative areas? Just so it's part of the public discussion, so people can weigh in. I mean, that's, that's the whole point of the process is that everyone, not just the board members, but every, the public knows why we're moving in this direction and not making a decision in 24 hours.
That, that discussions had been had at the board le- level about assistant principals.
Well, just, just the one because, because the numbers were so high at Dr. Williams and, and, but, but we talked about it for, you know, a couple of meetings before we actually, you know, were presented with a candidate.
Understood.
And, and we've known that the Spencers wanted help at, at Lille for a while. When, when, uh, help was, was added at, at, uh, Williams. That, that did come up as a topic of discussion, but I, I still think the process needs to be, be followed.
Yeah.
Well, certainly administration's hearing the voice of the board loud and clear. You know, what she'd like to see happen with administrative hire rights.
Right.
Further discussion? Are we ready to vote? We'll call, spending money.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
No.
Member Fisher abstains, Vice President Rollins Gay and President Demmett.
What's the yeses? Abstain.
I do have a press release to read. I don't know if that's something that you're interested in. Go ahead.
Yes. I'm very interested to make sure that this is nothing against the candidate in any way, shape or form. This is just strictly procedural.
Right. Concerns for administration, not concerns about the candidate.
Correct. I, I don't think anybody who didn't support the motion has any concerns whatsoever over the quality of the candidate that's been chosen.
Thank you. Urbana School District is pleased to announce Adriana Ochoa is the new assistant principal of Lille and Yankee Ridge Elementary Schools. This, the, um, her anticipated start date at these schools is January 3rd, 2018. Urbana School District welcomes Ms. Ochoa from Collinsville, Illinois, where she's an English language learning teacher for 7th and 8th graders at Collinsville Middle School. Prior to 2014, she worked as a special education inclusion teacher at both Doris Intermediate School for 5th graders and Craigner Elementary School for 5th and 6th graders, both in Collinsville. Ms. Ochoa says, "I embrace this new opportunity in my career and I'm very excited about the thought of joining Urbana School District." Ms. Ochoa earned a Master's of Arts in Teaching English as a Second Language from Southern Illinois University of Edwardsville. She earned a Master's in Educational Administration and a Bachelor's of Science in Special Education, also from Southern Illinois. She also has a middle school endorsement. We welcome Adriana Ochoa.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. A motion is approved. I, I don't know if I stayed, stated that I needed to. We're now ready for our study topic this evening, which is our school improvement plan for Yankee Ridge. I know a big one better be that we're gonna have a better physical plant in a year.
Right. Yeah, I don't want to disappoint the board, but I'm focusing on the continuous improvement plan as opposed to the construction, which-
That's, that'd be great.
Exciting.
Yeah.
I hope they're both excited. And I want to thank the, the board. I, I was listening to the discussion. I know it was a hard discussion with some procedures involved that you have concerned about. Um, but let me state that this, the vote for Ms. Ochoa to be an assistant principal at Yankee Ridge, I can attest, it'll have an immediate impact on students. Oftentimes, uh, principals find themselves, or administrators find themselves working with about 5% of the population, which Yankee Ridge is, um, on a daily basis, I should say, which is about, you know, 10 or 15 kids that need a lot of attention. And happy to do that, happy to support them. But when so much time and attention is, is focused on 5% of the population, it's easy to not be able to get the job done for the other 95% of the students. And I think tonight you'll see that our continuous improvement plan that we've set forth, um, for this school year, I think it's, uh, has high standards and having an assistant principal will help us achieve success in these areas. So you have a copy of the continuous improvement plan in about six-point font. I apologize for that. I have a PowerPoint you can look at as well. We have two main goals for our continuous improvement plan, um, one being a literacy-based goal. And it continues from last year that we're hoping that all students will read at grade levels or at the appropriate grade level with appropriate, uh, complex test, text. When we looked at our data from last year, we identified that around 77% of our Caucasian students were reading at grade level. But unfortunately, uh, 55% of our African-American students were only reading at grade level. Thus, that generated the, the second portion of the goal, which is we want to bring that number up to 80% of African-American students, if not 100%, but, um, taking one step at a time, 80% of our African-American students will be on or above grade level and reading by the end of May of 2017. And then the third component of our literacy goal is that we have a focus on writing. And what I like about this portion of the goal is it came up very much organically from the teachers. In our collaborative discussions, we realized that we had a writing scope and sequence in place at the district level, but we were having trouble, um, using it and identifying it and, and making it meaningful for our teachers. And in our discussions, especially with our instructional coaches, it often came up that teachers wanted more support in writing. Therefore, we made it a part of our continuous improvement goal. A little more on the rationale for why we identified these goals. Last year, you can see that we had 172 Caucasian students, of which 125 were at grade level. I think I misspoke, so that was 73% of our students that were white were reading at grade level. Our African-American students, um, I'm sorry, I misspoke. This is this year's data here with our, our, uh, right in the middle where it says, uh, white students. So this year, after two months of instruction, 73% of our white students are reading at grade level. And unfortunately, only 34%. Now, I had mentioned 55% last year, but now 34% of our African-American students are at grade level. That number went down. I need to state that that's never good when those numbers go down, but we acquired quite a few students that happen to be students of color that came to Yankee Ridge. And so I have to point out, you know, while, um, we're not gonna take full responsibility for the number going down, we're gonna take responsibility for those students at this point moving forward. And our goal is still absolutely 80% of all students with a specific focus on African-American students reaching grade level expectations and literacy. And then multiracial students for this year. We have 45 multiracial students that identify as multiracial and, uh, 27 per, 27 of those students are reading at grade level for only 60%. So the first part in any, any, um, problem is, is, uh, in solution, is identifying what the problem is. And so we, we see the problem and therefore we're giving it attention and directing a lot of our attention towards those African-American students and the students of color. Our second goal would be focused on students' social and emotional growth. Students will develop self-management skills that will help ensure academic progress and social, emotional growth. And staff will improve climate and culture by fostering equitable practices. So again, we're taking a look through an equity lens to ensure that all practices are meeting the needs of all students, regardless of ethnicity or race. Some rationale for this goal. Last year, our ODRs, our Office Discipline Referrals were at 592, which was a decrease from the year before. But again, looking at ethnicity, you saw, you see quite a few disparities. This is last year's data. 68% of our African-American students received ODRs, whereas only 21% of our white students had ODRs and only 27.6% of our multiracial students. So ideally, we would want those numbers to be proportionate to the ethnic and racial proportions of our student population. So looking at an update for this year, in the first two and a half, three months of school, we have 22% of our population is African-American students and 39% of them have received ODRs. Again, that's not, uh, we're trying to eliminate that. 51% of our population is white and only 39% have received ODRs. And then 10% are multiracial and 24% of those students. So we, we see some disparities and we're comfortable identifying those disparities stating, um, even, you know, publicly in this meeting that we're aware of it and we're taking steps in our action plan here to address those needs. So here's our plan for literacy. We presented these goals at the beginning of the school year at our back-to-school night, as we do every year. We want to involve parents as much as possible. That includes, uh, parent-teacher conferences, which we just held. And I'm happy to say that one of the things that we had at parent-teacher conferences was a parent-help desk that was staffed by our instructional coaches. Paige Wagner and Beth Mears did a wonderful job of inviting parents over to talk about how they can support their students at home. As we have the opportunity to speak to parents, we wanted to take advantage of it as much as possible. So I think that was helpful and I saw quite a few parents speaking to them at, at parent-teacher conferences. One of the reasons we asked the instructional coats, the coaches to have that conversation and to set up in the hallway was because our classroom teachers have about 15 or 20-minute conferences. And to go into depth about, here are some suggestions for how you can enrich your student or you can push your student academically. There's just not a lot of time for that. I was glad that they were available. We also send out newsletters and Class Dojo, which is an app you're probably familiar with or maybe you've heard about. That's a way to connect with parents on their phones so we can send messages. And sometimes parents use that even more than, than email. So it's great that we're trying to make that connection with our parents. We're also looking to provide resources and opportunities. Looking at the previous data, you could say it's a little bit of an achievement gap. Well, we're trying to address it and view it a little bit as an opportunity gap. So some opportunities that we have for students would be the book exchange program that our PTA sponsors. And that is a program where students can donate books, uh, and actually, community members, um, to our viewing, viewing audience. They can donate books and students every two weeks get to receive a free book. There's some kids that bring in a book and they get to take home a book. Other students qualify for just a free book, especially all our reading, our students that are receiving reading interventionists, reading interventions. Those interventionists have tickets that they give the kids every two weeks to say, get a book at the book exchange. We want to get the resources into those kids' hands, especially when we're talking about reducing disparities in reading among ethnic groups. And then we also have, uh, what's called Raz Kids, which is an app that is available on iPads and, and phones. And it's something that parents can use at home. Our kindergarten and first grade teachers all have access to that and share out the login information to parents. We had reading treat, Read and Treat Night just last Friday, where we invited families out. We had over 100 people attend Read and Treat Night. And we'll have our spring academic carnival as well as, um, our individual book boxes. So in each classroom, part of our, uh, main instructional tool in the classroom for reading is guided reading, which involves each child having an individual books, book box that is set with books that are at their appropriate reading level. So whenever they go back to their seat to read quietly or to read with a partner, they're using- they're using texts that are geared for them. You know, I recall as a child having texts in front of me at times, that I didn't quite know what I was looking at, but the teacher had given it to me, and we've gotten away from those days many, many years ago, and we know that if it's in the child's hand during reading instruction, it's something that they can and should be able to read. We're also providing support and instruction with our America Reads tutors through the University of Illinois. If you visit Yankee Ridge, you will see quite a few young, college-age adults in the hallway, often sitting at the small tables in the hallway, and they are working with students. They're certainly not replacing the teachers, but they have been given specific tasks. I think of our kindergarten students where they frequently are just reviewing letter ID and letter sound, and that's something that an America Reads tutor can do and free the teacher up to be able to work on the larger instruction and class management. Our interventionists are targeting our students that are two levels below grade level. Now, I don't mean two grade levels, I mean two reading levels. So each grade has approximately four to five levels that a student will progress within that grade period, and so we're able to target and provide reading intervention for those students that are two levels below where they should be. And then staff will continue to embrace and celebrate cultural differences amongst students, especially when they're looking to select resources for reading, and also when they're incorporating students on writing topics and their own experiences. The other part of our literacy goal is, of course, writing, as I mentioned before, and so our instructional coaches have helped quite a bit with developing a Google Classroom that teachers can use as a resource that has that scope and sequence that we talked about. We're working to establish more student-friendly rubrics and teacher-friendly rubrics as well. That's one of the things we're going to make more efforts towards and put some time and attention into as well. And then we're going to monitor all this through our continual professional collaborations, whether it be our RTI Days, Response to Intervention Days, where we look at our data from each classroom, or our grade-level collaborations that, of course, are provided by the PE teachers, that we're still thankful that we have it in Urbana that we hired last year. And then, how are we going to reach our goals with the social-emotional goal? Here it is. Identifying and sharing the expectations, again, at back-to-school night. We also have our PBIS expectation stations. We find that PBIS has some very strong characteristics that we're still utilizing at Yankee Ridge because they work. So the expectation stations are when you meet with the kids at the beginning of the year, or at times when you've had breaks at Christmas, or, excuse me, the winter break, or also spring break, and you go over what the expectations are in the various areas. Continual modeling and practicing of our behaviors. Staff training will continue with identifying cultural differences, restorative practices. That's something we've taken on at Yankee Ridge. We're working with Conflict 180 through the school district, and Elaine Spungen has come out to our school, and her partner, Mikel, is coming out next week or in two weeks. So looking at restorative practices, because part of managing students and increasing social-emotional awareness is to realize there are going to be times where there's conflict, and how do we handle ourselves when we're having that conflict? And most importantly, how do we keep the community, the classroom community intact, or sometimes the school community, depending on a child's behavior, so that we can all process together and talk about what happened, what wrongs were done, how do we make them right, how do we make them better? That's all ingrained in restorative practices. So we're happy to take that on, and we're looking forward to that at the elementary level. And then, of course, the things that we always do, effective supervision, problem-solving, and that's where I was speaking to having the assistant principal will help us out, one for another set of eyes and someone, a qualified educator and administrator, who in this particular candidate with Ms. Ochoa, she has experience in special education, and as you know, Yankee Ridge has the ED program, the Emotional Disabilities Program. So I'm looking forward to her being able to give a lot of attention to both the students and also the teachers to support them. And, excuse me, moving on. So we'll continue to look at our current structures, and we are focusing on our racial equity work that is monthly. And those conversations with racial equity work, while we have a monthly meeting, they're starting to flow naturally into other parts of our school, our work and our professional development, which is nice to see. That's exactly what needs to happen, especially when I showed you the disparities earlier that we have amongst various racial groups. We also have incentives and celebrations. Every student likes a good sticker. That's still true in 2017. So we have our PBIS Building Celebrations and our RRS tickets where we are rewarding the behavior that we want to see right away. Our quarterly awards ceremony, that's something we started last year and we're continuing this year, where we're recognizing students with ribbons for their outstanding achievement with the various character traits that I believe the board established many years ago. And then the Wall of Fame, that's something that we just started this year. And so I'll take a minute to say, when we talk about continuous improvement plan, and something that I feel that has come from central office, is that we need to live with this plan. We need to adapt this plan. It needs to be a living plan and adaptable based on our need. So our Wall of Fame came about because I have been talking a lot to the teachers about, what does our continuous improvement plan have that's going to help us reach our goals, and what is it lacking? And there were some suggestions that we need to find other ways to honor and to recognize the behaviors we want, and if we're targeting an improvement in at least reading academics with our African-American groups, and knowing that we have some disparities that African-American students are overly identified for, discipline referrals, we thought, why don't we have a plan where we highlight what students are doing well? We haven't told the students this, so I'm hoping they're not watching, but in our Wall of Fame, we're going to have bulletin boards in every hallway, every main hallway in our buildings. We have three main hallways. There'll be a bulletin board up in every one of those, and we're going to have pictures of the students doing a great job. The teachers know to intentionally target our students of color, because we want to catch them in those moments doing great jobs. And there's plenty of examples of it, but we want to get it on the wall. We want them to have a chance to see themselves on the wall and feel that sense of success. Now, that being said, if you come to the school in a couple of weeks, you'll probably say, "Wow, there's a lot of African-American students or students of color that are on the Wall of Fame." That's intentional. By the end of the year, I'm sure there'll be a lot of students, and you'll see a better proportion of our population, meaning the Caucasian students. It's not solely for one group, but in the beginning it is. We want to make sure to get those kids up right away. And so I flat-out said, let's make this something that we identify students that need to be recognized for the great work they're doing, whether it be academic work, or, you know, their behavior, or the effort they're putting forward, whatever success we can highlight. And it has to be authentic, too, which the teachers won't have any trouble with that. I'll highlight a couple more examples. Providing support there, our lunch groups. So my social worker, or our social worker, Heather Payne, she recently talked to the teachers and said, "We've identified some students that have needs. I'm looking to put together some lunch groups to better help them with their social-emotional learning and abilities." And she asked for volunteers. She had 12 teachers volunteer to give up a lunch period once a week to meet with students to work on a specific social and emotional focus. Yeah, she was hoping for 10, she got 12. So that's a testament to what a great staff I have. We continue to look for mentors, and we've done a little bit of mentor recruiting. I was fortunate to be able to attend at the new, an event at the New Jerusalem Church across the street from Yankee Ridge, and when I was there, I had the opportunity to say, "Hey, if you want to help us out, you could become a mentor." And three people at that meeting said that they were interested in the program and gave me their email addresses. So we are looking to find ways to connect with mentors and get people in. St. Matthew's Church on Philo, they emailed me a while ago and asked what they could do to better support, and that was one of my responses as well, was, "We need mentors. Happy to come and talk to you about it." And then empowering students. So our ambassador program, that's something that's new. We had students last year, a few students that came in in the middle of the school year, those students that are, that were transitional, at least in this case, for last year, and they had a little bit of trouble adjusting to Yankee Ridge. And so what we decided is, we're going to select ambassadors to help greet those students and make them feel welcome right away. And actually, last week, I identified a fourth and fifth-grade girl, a fourth-grade girl and a fifth-grade girl, that I asked them to help out, a new student that was coming to our school. Actually, well, I won't go into too much detail. And it's gone, it's gone very well. Initially, I think the child had some hesitations, it was a different school, she wasn't sure, and she even told us, "This isn't my school. You're not my teacher." You know, those types of things. But with subtle suggestions to these other children, hey, you know, maybe you could show her the library, maybe you could take her around and be her friend at lunch, maybe you could, you know, play a game with her at recess. I think that's really helped this child have a much better week. So we're doing things like that with the ambassadors program. And then book buddies. We've started to pair up our older students just maybe once a week with some of our younger students, because we think that we have some great examples of leadership at Yankee Ridge, and we want to allow those older students, fourth and fifth graders, to show their nurturing side, their leadership, their academic abilities with our younger students. So we're buddying up a little bit more than we have in the past. And as I said, we're embracing our continuous improvement plan. It's a living guide for our collective vision and mission this year. We've referenced it often in many of our meetings, more so than last year, and it's adapted and changed, as we've seen even in this school year, that we've needed to adapt and change. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Any questions for Brian?
Yes, ma'am.
So of the learning process on the African-American children, what percentage of those are in that behavior class?
Oh, in the ED program?
Yes.
I would say, I would say a low number in that, you know, there's probably eight to nine students in that program. And the advantage of that program is that those students get a lot of academic instruction that is delivered directly from a teacher. So there might be four students in a class with a teacher, and perhaps an eight or two. And so, believe it or not, they make a lot of progress.
So they are doing higher.
They are.
Okay.
I know that doesn't fit the schema that we have for, you know, emotional.
Yeah, but that does. That answers the question.
Yeah.
Paul?
I was wondering, I noticed this is a challenge district-wide, but the ability to hire and retain teachers of color, is there anything special that Yankee Ridge is planning on doing to do that?
Right. Well, I, let me start by saying, we have hired a teacher of color. That being said, even that comment felt awkward, that's not well enough. That's not good enough. I would be happy to work with the district and human resources on that. I think that's something that can, the efforts there, I think, are better concentrated at the district level, helping to funnel candidates in. And if I'm, honestly, if I'm not mistaken, I think that, yeah, I think that this one particular teacher that we hired, that happens to be a teacher of color, I believe that she, someone did point out that she had applied and had had a conversation with her about the advantage of working for the Urbana School District. So I, other than interviewing and identifying that she was the perfect fit for the school, I can't take credit for bringing her into the system. Great question.
I have sort of a general question. I really appreciate the approach that our district is taking in terms of evaluating our practices through an equity lens. I mean, it's come up in your comments and others before you, and I think that's really a positive thing, and I'm quite proud of that. And then you specifically mentioned the monthly equity meetings that your staff have to address, you know, the literacy and social-emotional goals that are part of your continuous improvement plan. Can you just help me understand a little bit about how that works? I mean, maybe give an example or two of how those discussions kind of result in changed practice, improved practice, you know, as far as literacy or social emotion?
Right. So last year, you know, the discussion started at monthly meetings last year, and a lot of the focus last year was on ourselves, on our own implicit biases that we all have as human beings. It's a natural part of our human condition, and being exposed to, you know, mass media and the neighborhoods we grew up in. So a lot of it was identifying what our beliefs are and focusing on the self. Now, this year, it's transitioning much more into the technical side of things, into the school aspect side of things. Thus, we're having discussions about, what are we going to do for these students that are achieving lower? How are we going to better support them socially and emotionally? And the conversation is shifting, and I think, they're difficult conversations, you know. I think anytime you speak of race in our society, it can, it's heavily charged, and I think sometimes people are, I think people, I can, I'll say myself, as a white male, sometimes I'm hesitant to have those conversations because I don't want to misspeak. And I have had staff members say, you know, "This feels uncomfortable." But part of the equity mission is to, and our norms within our meetings, is that it is going to feel uncomfortable. So it's starting to feel more comfortable. We're getting used to having these conversations, and we're not where we need to be, but it's nice to see a shift being directed more towards, how does this actually play out in a practical approach? And we're still working on those solutions. You know, we have these goals that I'm hoping we'll achieve, but they're high goals, to reduce any type of reading gap from 55 to 80%. You know, that's going to be a challenge regardless of ethnicity. So I guess what I'm saying is, we're not quite there yet, and I think it's going to be ongoing.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Questions for Brian?
Yeah. One thing that I would add is that, one of the things that he talked about, Mr. Anderson talked about, was that the school improvement plans are dynamic, they're ongoing, and really wanting to address what students need, and not just create a document that looks good, but reflecting actively, daily, monthly, quarterly, and looking at how those goals are being met, seeing if there's changes or additions that need to be done by any implementation or actions that are being taken, and evaluating that process as we go through it to see, you know, what's working well, where do we need to make additional adjustments, or how can we better utilize support? And so one of the things that Ms. Patton did ask about how those sessions, those equity sessions and professional development work out in regards to improving students' social-emotional learning, is we know that there's a body of research that demonstrates that teacher expectations have one of the highest impact on student outcomes. And so if it is that we're very honest about how it is that we engage all students, that can have a tremendous impact on outcomes for our students, you know, and also, you know, how it is that we engage the community and the families that we serve. So I really appreciate Mr. Anderson coming and presenting this information to the board tonight, and has done a fantastic job.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan.
Bryan, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Good job. All right. Dig my agenda out here. That concludes our study topics for this evening. We have no call for future special or executive meetings. Did Don give you a superintendent's report, or?
I do not have a superintendent's report.
Okay.
The superintendent is sick. I guess that's the report.
Yes, superintendent is sick.
Yes, get better, Don.
I think he'd much rather be here at the meeting than at home dealing with what he's dealing with.
Yeah.
All right. Board reports. I'll start out. The play starts on Wednesday. So opening for the Adams family, Wednesday, what time? Seven?
Seven.
7:00 PM, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday afternoon, 2:00. Good. So, should be, I was at an event where Don asked if anybody that was involved, it was the Half-Century Club meeting, and the choir was, the acapella group was singing. Alex is in it, and so is Lily, I think, no? And he asked how many people are involved in the play, and nearly all of them raised their hands. So it must be a really sizable cast, a sizable endeavor. Other board reports?
I just wanted to say, it seems like there was a very good turnout for Mr. Blackman's last game, and I was very happy that so many students and everybody came out to support him.
And there will be an event in the spring. It's in the planning stages, and that's all I can tell you about it right now, but it'll be in the spring to recognize Randy for his 30-year coaching career, 32 years including I want to bring up and recognize Olivia Rosenstein. I want to bring up and recognize Olivia Rosenstein for finishing fifth in the cross-country, quite an achievement, and the girls' team as a whole finished third, wasn't it, third in class? Pretty, no, I've forgotten. I'm sorry. I've forgotten what they, they finished third in some meet, maybe that was a regional meet and not the state meet, but I think they did quite well.
Won the regionals.
First time ever. And, do you know what the girls' cross-country team did?
They actually finished seventh.
Seventh in the state, thank you.
Somebody can help me, there was one, one of the boys won an award that was the first time a boy from UHS had got.
Justice card.
Justice, that's it. What did he get again?
It's a girl.
Oh, sorry.
No, justice is a guy.
Justice is a boy, isn't he?
He was the first male cross-country winner in thirty-five years.
Really? Forty-five years.
To make it to the state, and then Olivia went there and placed fifth, which is really outstanding.
And I think, I have to say, they're very.
As a freshman, as a sophomore.
They're talented athletes, but we do have to give some kudos to Coach Todd, who started them, Coach Searing, who's no longer with us unfortunately, started them up when they were middle schoolers, and they were on fire from that point on, so he gave Mr. Faroki a great team.
Yeah, that's true. All right, anything else?
I look forward to going to Chicago. There's a lot going on in the state right now.
I'm supposed to remind that she has brochures for you.
Things in the House and Senate that could have some major impacts on school districts across the state.
And Lori has folders for everybody at the end of the meeting that's going. So, okay, other board reports. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion's carried, we're adjourned.